We had a 6:30 opening of the meeting. We had an executive session, and now we're back to the regular meeting, an open session. First item on the agenda is public comments. Hearing none. Next item is approval of minutes. September 19th, 2018, regular session.
Second.
Motion second. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Next is September 26th, 2018, regular session.
So move.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. Next item is review and vote to approve warrants.
I move to approve the warrants as printed in the agenda.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And we have a public hearing, but we'll jump down. All the pens down. Next, we can go right down to new business. Recognize the acceptance of $775 in personal donations from individuals and businesses in the community from April 2019 to June 2018 to the Council on Aging and to approve the expenditure of these funds for general purposes.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. You know, we can do this next one. Consider amending the membership number for the Economic Development Task Force. Mr. Hadley, do you have something to add?
I asked to put this on because we've had trouble getting a quorum, so I'd like to reduce it to five members, since we have a quorum of three.
So what will be the breakup of the committee after that? Anita, do you know? Because wasn't it residents and...
We have one planning board.
One planning board.
One...
I can go on the work.
One selectmen, ex officio, or something?
No, there's a select. I think we changed. Well, one selectmen, one...
Planning board.
Planning board. And then the rest are just...
Community or citizen.
Right.
So we had... Did we have seven at first?
We had seven. Because Marion resigned.
So do we want to bring it down to five?
Five, so we can have three as a four.
How many are on the board?
I'm just wondering, do we have more than five members now?
We have yourself, myself, Mark Freeman, Bill Chase, and Barbara Wyatt. Five members, yeah.
No, that one.
Nobody else, right? That's it? Oh, you know, there's a planning board...
Yeah, there's a planning board member. Mark is not a planning board.
No.
Sarah Miles.
The new member.
Sarah Miles, yeah.
So you have Sarah Miles, Christopher... Chris... Bill Chase, you... Man... So right now, it looks like we have Sarah, planning board member. We have Board of Select member. We have Bill Chase. We have John Hadley. It still says Marion, which she's no longer. We have Barbara Wyatt and Mark. One, two, three, four, five, six.
Barbara Wyatt says through April of 18.
Yeah, the websites... Yeah, they had... Needs to be updated, but we have one, two, three, four, five. We have six members now.
I think it's way to make Billy an associate member. And then... So we have five members. Because we can... That way, we can have a quorum.
There's no provision for an associate member currently within the structure.
You can't do that. Okay.
You having a problem getting a quorum?
Right.
Are there members that never show up? They need to no longer be members?
I think we need to look at that.
So do we need to make the... What?
Maybe we can look at members that...
Yeah. Let's bring it to the next meeting.
Want to put it off to the next meeting, and then we'll talk to the members that are currently on the committee and see. Is it Mark is a planning board reconstitutor?
No, Mark is a resident.
Oh, that's it. Mark's a resident, Sarah's the planning board. Yeah. That's... Yeah. Why don't we talk about re... So we'll put that on the next agenda? Yep.
October 17th meeting.
I'll talk to two of the members.
Well, we can even see if those two want to...
Right.
If they want them the same, maybe he can just do the planning board.
Yeah, that's good idea.
Okay, so we pass over that, and it's five passed. So we have a public hearing. If somebody wants to read the public hearing notice.
Public notice is hereby given in conformity with the requirement of general bylaw of the town of West Boyleson, Article 23. The public hearing and the notice that the Board of Select will meet on Wednesday, October 3rd, 2018, at 7:05 PM for the purpose of considering amending the... Amending the number of the policies contained in Section F of the Board of Select's policy book.
Okay.
Those policies include Policy F4, Investment Policy, Policy F5, New Growth Taxation Revenue Policy, Policy F6, Policy on Fraud, Frauden and Deduction to the... To be replaced by Anti-Fraud Policy, Policy 7, Fund Balance Policy, to be replaced by Financial Reserve Policy, and Policy 8, Cash Dispostment, Petty Cash, Tailing and Reconciliation of the Cash Policies, and Procedures to be replaced by Revenue Turnover Policy, Reconciliation Policy, Dispostment Policy, and a new Tailing's Policy. The meeting will be held in Select's Meeting Room of the Town Hall located 140 Worcester Street, West Boyleson. For additional informations or to review the proposed information, please contact the Office of the Board of Select and Town Administrators. All interested persons and groups and agencies are invited to attend.
Okay. Anita, do you want to...
Okay. Thank you. As the board is aware, you were provided a copy of the draft policies, I believe, two meetings ago. And I've been working with the members of my finance team, which include Leslie Gert and our town accountant, Bonnie Yasek, our treasurer collector, and Diane Peterson, who is our regional assessor. We were looking at these financial policies because we were concerned that when the municipal modernization bill included a number of finance-related changes to state law, we wanted to make sure that our financial policies reflected those necessary changes, but also reflected the current procedures that the town is using. So we started looking through the existing policies that Raj just mentioned, and we were fortunate enough to receive copies of financial policies from other communities, several of which had been developed for those communities through consultants and through the use of DOR assistance through the Community Contact Best Practices Program. So when we found those draft policies, we started using those as a basis to amend or replace the policies that we needed. As Raj mentioned, the policies that we have, F1, F2, F3, and F9, will stay as is. There are no modifications to those. But the other policies have either been amended, or they're being replaced in entirety. And the reason for that is so that we can be assured that they do reflect current practices and reflect the changes to law. So the new policies that we're asking you to consider and vote on tonight are the Anti-Fraud Policy, Capital Planning, Debt Management, Financial Reserves, Forecasting, Investments, New Growth, OPEB, Overlay, Revenue Turnover, Tailing's, and Tax Enforcement. In the process of going through these drafts, we did send the drafts to the Finance Committee to seek their feedback on draft policies. And the Finance Committee did look through the policies, but they chose to comment and provide edits on four of them. And those were Capital Planning, Debt Management, Financial Reserves, and OPEB. The others, they felt that it just... It wasn't appropriate for them to be commenting on them. When I gave you the draft set of policies, since then, we have been working with Selectman Pat Crowley on the documents and providing... Working with him to get his necessary suggestions and edits, and those have all been incorporated, as well as the Finance Committee documents. So what we have in front of us tonight, excuse me, are a comprehensive set of new policies that we would like the board to approve, to add to our list of financial policies, with the understanding that these would be renumbered along with the existing policies, so that the policies would go in name of alphabetical order and would be renumbered accordingly. I think that's it in terms of the discussion on process. Leslie, did I forget anything?
I don't think so.
Okay.
If I may.
I went, as Anita said, I went through all of these with a fine-tooth comb.
The past couple of days, we went back and forth. I made a bunch of changes that were mostly typographical, a few minor changes, nothing really substantive. I think the policies in total are very well-written. They reflect best practices that accountants and finance people should be following. They protect the town from theft, and they set the town up to be doing the right things financially, as the town has a pretty good reputation based on our bond rating, and, you know, we don't have many budget issues. So I recommend that the board accept these policies as written.
Anybody else have any comments?
Mr. Crowley's fine with it. I'm fine with it.
I won't get to blame him if there's a problem.
[laughing]
Anybody from the public have any comments on it? No. So we need a motion to close the public hearing?
So move.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And now, we would need a motion to accept the changes.
So move.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay.
Thank you very much. And I would like to thank Leslie Gert and Diane Peterson and Bonnie Yasek in doing a lot of the work associated with all this. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. Next item is consider approving proposed sign for the Department of Public Works.
Just to show you where it is, it's pretty much the same sign we have out front here. And it's, I think, pretty much the same sign we're going to have at the senior center. So it just goes in line with what we have. Right now, we have no sign. Right now, no one knows we're there. So we just thought we'd put a sign out there. We took the guide rail out of the front. We wanted to see that little island, so we have a nice little grass island out front now, with no eyes or guide rail there, and we thought we'd put a sign out there so people know where we are. And this is the... That price is probably $300 or $400 higher than what it would be, because we'll install it ourselves. And I also went to Mass Corps. I went to a trade show last week, and I gave this to Mass Corps. So they're going to give me a price, so hopefully I can get it even cheaper. So... But I just wanted you to see the design, see if you like the design.
Is it double-sided?
This one is, yeah. It will be.
Okay.
So it'll be perpendicular to the roadway?
Right. So either direction coming up 12, you'll see it.
I like the idea of having all the town signs look alike. I think that's a good idea.
The only modification, I think I'm going to put the 35 Worcester Street on there too, so...
Yeah, that would be good.
I think that's a good idea.
Do you really want people to know where you are?
[laughing]
That's the other thing. You notice there's no phone number on it.
I was... I noticed that. But, I mean, I...
There's no open sign. The open sign's closed.
If you do get a less price because this was the first one that you went with, are you going to go back to them?
Probably, because it...
Only to be fair?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. And they've been good with us in the past.
Right.
So... That's it. I just wanted you to see. I don't think we need anything to vote on, but...
When you got this... When you got this price, did you call other... Did you call other companies?
No, not yet. But like I said, right after I got this, I went to Mass Corps, because I was going to the trade show, and I met some of the people.
Okay.
I gave them the sheet, and they haven't got back to me yet. But I think they'd probably be the cheapest out of anybody.
Yeah.
But they may not be able to do it. But I could throw this out to Sunshine Sign, and there's another one out in, I think, Grafton, another sign company that I'm familiar with.
Right.
See what they could do.
So do we need a... I guess it says, "Consider approving proposed sign." So we need a motion to approve... This looks like the... This looks like ASIA?
Mm-hmm.
This looks like the one outside?
It's identical, yeah.
Do you want a motion? Then, you have a money amount? Up to that amount?
Actually, I was just looking for the design. If you guys like the design, it'll come out of my budget. There's no extra money.
Yeah, I mean, it would be nice if we put this together with the whole new paving in the parking lot.
That would be really...
Because now we're going to have a beautiful sign, a nice green area in that parking lot.
Yeah, no, I'm... The parking is on the capital plan for FY '20.
So this isn't... So this can... The parking lot can be fixed around what you're doing here?
I probably won't even put this up till spring, just because it's right on 12, and the state plows are going to be going by there. And I... In fact, I'm entertained at the thought of removing it in the winter. It gets so close to 12, and they go by so fast, and I don't want it to get destroyed. But it depends on what kind of sign I get. If I get a good sturdy one...
I think we need to just design it so it stays up.
Yeah.
So if it has to go in, I don't know, a little deeper in, or I don't know...
Yeah, I'm a little nervous about where it's going to be, but it'll look nice.
How far off the road actually is it?
It's... There's only an eight-foot island there, so it's... You've got like a four-foot shoulder in the beginning of the island, and it'll be right in that eight-foot island, so it's probably only five feet off the road.
Is the island going to have a berm around it?
It has a berm around the front now. We're going to finish the back.
Yeah, so...
It'll look good.
That means they're cutting up the berm and everything if they hit the sign.
Well, right. I don't worry about a hidden sign. It's more the snow, the heavy snow.
Well, but we have to... Well, we have to design it.
It is what it is, yeah.
I mean, taking it down every year would probably be...
They go up and down 12, and I don't see any signs down, so I guess maybe I'm working for nothing.
But are there going to be lights on this?
I wasn't planning on it, but it's an option.
I wouldn't worry about lighting it, because we are clear-closed when it's dark, so...
Yeah.
You know, I don't think it's...
Yeah.
I mean, it's up to you, but...
Well, if...
Maybe when we do the parking lot over...
Yeah, maybe a ride-conduit, just in case, you know, while the parking lot's done.
When we do the parking lot over, we can do it.
Or solar lighting?
Solar would be better, yeah. Yeah, I like that. And it probably wouldn't last all night, but it would last...
I have a motion to approve the design. I have a motion and a second to approve the design. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? No. Yes. There's no opposed. Okay. Drawing of for adopt an island program. So we're going to go in audit here? Is that correct?
Yeah, we only have two.
We have two possible people. So we have... The first island is Woodland, West Boyleson Street.
And that goes to... Oh, is that you, John?
No.
I don't know.
It looks like it.
It says C...
It's... Does it say CVS?
Jane Hadley.
Oh, Jane Hadley. They... Right on the other corner.
Sorry.
I saw CVS, so that's the island.
This is Woodland Street.
Woodland, right.
Yeah, Woodland and West Boyleson Streets. I'm like, what?
Okay, next island is Island is... So we had two people, so I guess they're going to get Church in West Boyleson Street.
And that's going to Reservoir Garage. So, and that's it. We still have two islands left.
Okay. And then we still have Thomas and Crescent and Cement Island on Maple and Schuesburg Street. Next item is review VHB charges. What's that? Is that in the agenda package tonight, or...
I don't have...
Did the other members see that?
I haven't received the charges. I know they were sent to you. I didn't receive them.
Okay. Yeah, so I'll... I guess since this... We'll put this on for the next meeting. I think Mr. Hadley also asked at the last meeting to discuss about having other people get... We get quotes for this project, for this work. Can we put that all on for the next meeting and talk about it? And I'll look for that item I got from the...
Clerk.
From the ZBA. I mean, from the planning board. I'll send it out. I'll send it to you, and you can send it to the board.
Okay.
Cemetery land acquisition, next steps, application to DCR.
So, Mr. Chairman, you've all received a copy of the letter from DCR. This is the response that was sent to Mr. Gambasini. We had applied on his behalf to determine whether or not DCR had any jurisdiction over the land that is proposed, being considered for development for cemetery. This land is off of Pierce Street, up behind Maple. And the DCR letter basically didn't say that we could or could not use the property. All they responded to was to say that they do have jurisdiction because it's within 0 to 200 feet of a tributary. It is also within 200 to 400 feet of a tributary, and it's bordering vegetated wetlands. So their response to our request for determination of applicability was just to announce to us what different provisions of law they feel they have jurisdiction under. Normally, under a response from DCR, a community would have the ability to either appeal or then decide whether they want to go ahead and request a waiver to do the work within the area. They really have given us nothing to appeal. I mean, they're basically just stating fact. So I met with John Scannell to try to decide what is the appropriate next step for the town to do. And he had said that if we wanted to move ahead with a formal request for a waiver to be allowed to do work, meaning develop roadways, et cetera, within the impacted area, that that would require that we do formal engineering plans. So what he suggested was that in the meantime, that we should file a letter to DCR asking for an informal advisory opinion as to what they might expect of us if we were to do the work on this property. He said that we should include some basic, you know, layout plans, and I've included in the back of the packet that you have in front of you, some aerials and some other information that would identify to them where their areas of jurisdiction are versus where the land is that we're planning to do the work. So I think what I'm asking the board to do tonight is to authorize the Cemetery Board, myself and the Chairman of the Board of Selectmen, to work to develop this letter requesting the informal advisory opinion, and to get that submitted in as soon as possible. We'll then get some better information back from DCR in terms of what they think might be feasible to move ahead. Then the board can make a decision about whether you feel it's worth spending the money to do the necessary engineering to get a formal decision on a waiver to be allowed to do work within that area.
So, okay.
Wouldn't the cemetery do the engineering plans? Wouldn't it be the town doing it? Wouldn't it? If they were... Because who would pay for the engineering plans?
I'm not sure that the Cemetery Department has adequate funds within their revolving fund to do the engineering work, so it might require that there be an appropriation to do this at a future town meeting.
So I read this, and I said, this tells me literally nothing.
Right.
Zero to 200 feet from a tributary, 200 to 400 feet from a tributary, is that if the whole parcel is that thing? Or are we talking... Is the tributary 199 feet away, and we can't dig on the first foot? I mean, I... Do we know?
So if you... I know that you don't have a colored version of this, but you have a black and white version of this, which shows Maple Street, Pierce Street, and it shows the area of frontage that the Gambasini parcel has on Maple Street, where that small pond is.
Mm-hmm.
And then it shows the two areas of frontage off Pierce Street. So basically, what John Scannell was saying informally to me was that, you know, if we could find a way to avoid the orange area...
Which is half the...
Which is half of that front part that's at the intersection of Maple and Pierce. If we could find a way to avoid that and find a way to have the access into the cemetery, the public and operational access, avoid that orange area, that they would likely view that as being a nominal impact to their watershed protection areas. This would be the 0 to 200. This would be the... To the 400. And they felt... John felt that that's something that would probably likely be approved, because, as you know, this piece of property extends much further up, and the majority of the area that would be impacted for cemetery use would be that property that's further back.
Where did you say the entrance?
This is the area where, at the site visit, we had talked about that potentially being an entrance area. This is the existing entrance in by the maintenance garage that's there, and this is another piece... Another entrance further down off Pierce Street.
So we wouldn't be able to go off...
We would... He determined that it would be highly unlikely that they would ever allow permission to go up of Maple Street.
Makes it, to me, makes it a lot less attractive than...
Absolutely is.
There's a lot less land that we would...
Well, there's... How many acres is the whole lot?
Twenty-two.
Ninety acres, right?
Twenty plus an additional potential.
Twenty acres. What do you think that circle is? Does it... Did they give you any?
I'm sure we could figure it out. I don't have that information, too.
I think the whole problem is the entrance.
This is not even...
You don't have an entrance anymore.
Yeah, I like the entrance off the main road.
So the entrance would now have to come off of Pierce Street, she is saying, which would be...
So can we...
Major difference.
So can we appeal that? That we... No. What can we appeal? He says we can...
He's suggesting that we seek an advisory opinion to determine if it is... I mean, he basically said we could ask for this, but they would likely tell us, no, that there's too much impact. But that he suggests that if we feel that it would be workable to have access be from the two Pierce Street frontage areas, that we should identify that, create a very basic plan that shows where the accesses would be and how it would lead up to the cemetery usable area, and then ask them to determine if they feel that would be workable and whether it'd be something that they would allow.
Do we have... Do we have, on the other side of the... Do we have any other access off a road?
No.
Besides Pierce and Maple?
No.
It doesn't go around to the other side?
No.
It abuts the Affordable Housing... Excuse me, the Housing Authority land off Maple Street, but...
It doesn't come off of 140.
No. That would make a huge difference going to Pierce Street, Maple, over there. I don't think...
Chris, are you thinking the old fire road that... Off of 140 that connects to the dead end on Pierce Street?
No, I was thinking the... Doesn't this... Doesn't the Housing Authority have...
The Housing Authority connects to 140.
They have connections.
Yes.
This land doesn't.
No.
It would have to go through that and then to this land.
Correct.
That would be a big entrance. Yeah.
That would be a half-mile...
Can't ask, but, I mean, I think we should ask.
Ask for the...
For the Maple Street entrance as well. We know what the answer's going to be, but we can at least ask.
And they might have another idea.
Did we come right out the letter that was sent? Was it very direct in asking what we were looking for? And they just decided to do it as a global and not answer the questions?
The application was very direct, but what was not included were engineered plans for them to give firm response to.
I think we could let them go ahead and send a letter out, tell you what they want to do.
No, get the... The... What do we ask for? You said we have to ask for a...
An informal advisory opinion.
Informal advisory. So that's what we need to...
And that would be sent to Patricia Curtis of DCR.
And could we ask for that with an entrance off of Maple Street?
We can ask them to comment on various different options.
Yeah, so that's...
Yeah.
Yeah, I...
And we do that to the chair, so we don't have to...
I think this means... I think that means a lot if we can't enter off.
I agree.
Not only because it's a... I think it's just because it's a backside street.[1648.25]
Mm-hmm.
You know, it's not a main road. I don't think it's the best, best thing, but...
I agree.
I guess we'll have to get the, so do you want a motion that we sent that here?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so someone make that motion?
Second.
Okay, a motion is second. And any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay. I'll have to look at mine in a minute. Consider proving the hire of Jacob Cassina as production assistant for WBPATV as step one of grade two, 1366, an hour effective October 7, 2018. Have a motion, second. Something different we did this time with the WBPATV. He came in two or three times, kind of learned the equipment before we hired him. He saw what he needs to do and then kind of volunteered for a few, a few weeks with us, so kind of helped us out. And then now we decided to hire this young man to help us with taping the TV shows. Okay, have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Consider voting to accept the surrender of all alcohol beverage liquor license issued to keepers DBA Motel Grill and Spirits, 175 West Boylston Street. Someone...
Okay.
Have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, next is all business sewer rate review and adjustment. I'm just gonna, when you get set up, I'm just gonna run out and grab something in my drawer.
Yeah, I'm not hiring to use the, the screen. Could we use it just so the public can see? Is anyone able to see?
What is this area? What is this?
I play 17.
Okay, I have another idea.
I wanna find this first.
Okay. I wanna find the same thing that you have for a handout there. That I can put it on the... Look at that, like magic. Didn't work last time, but it's certainly working now.
It isn't working today. Is that the one you wanted? That slide you wanted?
Yep.
Yep.
All right. Hi, everybody. My name is Mike Schrader. I'm with Ty and Bond. And, can I make this even a little bigger for people trying to look? So last time I was here, we were talking about the mid-year FY18 sewer adjustment, or rate adjustment, I should say. And I'm back to just sort of refresh everybody on where we are. I looked at some numbers preliminarily that I got relative to usage and revenue and expenses just to check in on the predictions that we made. And so I was really happy that the usage was within .09%, which means it was just very steady from last year, which sewer is more steady than, than water. The total expenses were about within 1% of projection. And revenue was a little low and the retained earnings are a little lower than we predicted. And honestly, I haven't, I haven't fully updated the model to reflect last year's data. So when I, when I plugged in some numbers to reflect that, and there's a couple of questions I need to ask and verify, but it looks like you're still on track here. And we're in a mode of, you know, funding by spending down retained earnings or reserves and then also doing rate increases. And I didn't want to just show an alternate projection without really vetting the numbers. But when I looked at it, it looks like, you know, out in '23, '24, it might go too low. So there may be an adjustment in '21 or '22, different from what is shown, which I think is sort of par for the course. So what I would recommend is you continue with the series of 8% increases as discussed and, or as, you know, previously predicted. And let me, I guess, spend a little more time with the numbers and the nitty gritty to, to just validate that better. And that's, was sort of my intent going forward, that every year after the fiscal closes, you can update your projections to just see how you're doing, you know? Is it, was it more than you thought? Was it less than you thought? Because that affects the future rate increases. So I apologize for being a little out of sync with the, with the accounting and the DPW on, on that. But I do have all the data now and I can update this to, you know, give you a better insight either next time or I can, you know, just send it back around when it's done.
What you have on the screen is different than what we have printed in front of us. We've got the, we've got six, eight percents consecutive. Yours pushes it out until, looks like '27.
All right. Apologies.
Well, either way, this is not updated, right?
We're looking... Correct. It's, it's sort of verbally updated.
So I guess, do we want to look at this at a future meeting or, since we don't have updates?
When will this be updated? When we have...
It won't actually take me that long. I just, I tried to do it when I was just sitting back there and just some of the numbers were not the same. So I didn't want to show them. One, two, three, four, five.
I'm sorry, one second. Anita, you want to?
Yeah, the original intent for tonight was to have Mike come back and just kind of give a brief overview in terms of where, where he sees us as, as to the predicted trends. So the intent was that tonight would be just the, the basic discussion and that we would be scheduling a public hearing regarding any rate changes for the November 7 meeting.
Well, but would, but so that will be the, that'll be the night we get the updated?
Get the full detail and go through a decision. And Mike, at that point, would be able to give you a screen like this that would show you if he went ahead and did the 8% increase again, you know, where that would send us in terms of trend and whether he still feels at that time that we might need to make an adjustment higher than 8% in the 2023 timeframe.
Yeah, this is, this is the, you know, the live model from the handout that you're looking at. And like I said, when I was just preliminary looking at the numbers, you're, we're here in '19 now. And like I said, it was looking maybe a little low in '22, '23. So I would just want to check. I guess it does have a limit after all. So really, yeah. What Anita just said was to just come and refresh you and then November 7 would certainly be enough time to have a revised update.
When you say a little low, '22, '23, you mean low as in dipping too far into retained earnings and running out of cash?
Yeah, yeah. Correct, correct. And that's, you know, if you sort of look at it, when you're funding from a combination of rate increases and reserve spend down, which frankly is the, I think, the best, is the whole value of having a long-range plan, when you make a little change upfront, it dips lower down in the, in the future. So at that point, say that was, say that was validated and I look at everything and it says, yep, you're gonna, you're gonna go lower than you want to in four years. You can, you have a choice. You can say, well, we'll, we'll do little tweaks now or we'll wait and then, you know, if it continues to validate that, then we'll make a larger jump then. It's, it's really, and that's the sort of beauty of having some time, is that you're not forced to make a drastic change. And though, the whole concept of this is, you know, I call it ratemaking on a continuum. So it's not a one-shot deal. It's not looking at, it wasn't me, was not looking at it in a, in a vacuum year to year. It's, it's having an understanding of what's gonna be happening in, in future years, so...
Have you plugged in the 20-year plan for the infiltration dollars? That's, that's, is or will be accounted for in the...
Yeah, it is. And, you know, so for example, one of the other things to validate was, you know, did you spend the money this year? Did that change? Have you changed your approach? You know, really, is there anything, you know, anything that came up? Anything that, that, you know, you didn't realize you needed to do or realized that you didn't need to do that would impact future projections? So that's, you know...
Yeah, so I don't, I'm not exactly sure why we're on tonight. I guess it says to review, review and adjustment. So I guess we'll just wait till the November public hearing to, to look at the adjustments, sorry, to look at the differences. So right now, it looks like we have an 8% increase all the way to 2023. When you come back to us, could that change?
Yeah, yeah, it could. But not, but not, you're only setting rates a year at a time. I don't think it'll impact '19. So in my opinion, or my recommendation would be go ahead, schedule the rate hearing. And when we come, well, first, before that, if I think that that '19's not gonna work, which I'm pretty sure it is, then I would say something ahead of time. But otherwise, you come to the rate hearing, we talk about what's on the table, which would be the FY19 rate, and then give you an updated forecast as to the rest of the projection period.
Is that okay with the...
Yeah, it makes sense.
Yeah, let's just, um...
Basically, this is a warning that we're gonna go with eight. When we do the rate hearing, we're gonna stick with eight, but it might not be eight all along. It might change in four years.
Right. And yeah, so I apologize for being out of sync.
Okay.
But it's still a good, you know, chance to come in front of you and...
Do you, Anita, do you have anything to add? No, not right now, not till...
No, I think just a reminder that last year at this time, the board did make a decision that rather than go ahead with one large rate increase at that time, that you preferred taking the multi-year smaller rate increase approach. And so that's why we're coming back to you with another hearing this year to look at what the FY19 rate adjustment would be. It had been projected as being another 8% increase, and I think you just heard Mike say that it would likely still be an 8% increase. But the rate hearing will also give us a chance to show people updated data to see whether that 8% increase would likely hold for the next few years or it will act as a warning to the board, to the public, that a higher than 8% increase might be needed at some point in the next few years.
Did we get, I know we had a big discussion, when we were talking about one big one or five small ones. Did we get a bunch of complaints about the rates changing?
No, we did not.
Because I know that was one of the concerns.
It was a concern and it didn't like out the way that had been warned.
Good.
And the other thing to account for is the implementation. And you guys have a fairly straightforward adjustment. So if you have like a really complicated rate structure, you know, it's, might be better to do it in bigger jumps, but it's pretty straightforward and they didn't have any trouble implementing it. So that's another, you know, sort of ease of use thing.
Okay, any other questions right now? Yeah, that's, that's fine. So if, if at the next meeting, you can bring something that we can put on the screen.
Yeah.
So we'll, I mean, that worked pretty good, so we'll get it to set up if we need to bring another computer.
Well, as long as you're here, I guess. Because when I pushed that button last time, nothing happened.
Yeah, so we'll just get it just so the public can see.
Yeah, no, and that's, that's what this is about, is communications and transparency, so...
Okay, so we'll just put, talk about it again on November 7. Correct? Next item is the town administrators' reports. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. The first item is just update the board on two current issues that are underway. The West Boylston Housing Authority and the West Boylston Affordable Housing Trust met several weeks ago and reached an agreement that they would work together to develop an RFP to seek proposals from developers for the development of approximately 60 units of housing on the back portion of that land owned by the Housing Authority off of Maple Street. And that would be done through a, a long-term ground lease. This RFP would be used to establish a set of criteria that would be used to rank proposals received with preferences being in terms of developmental style, amenities, et cetera. And obviously, they're, they have quite a bit of work ahead with them to develop that RFP before it actually goes out and we start to receive proposals. But I wanted to make you aware of the fact that that agreement is now in place and I'll be sharing additional details with the board as they become available.
I just wanted to, I mean, that's, we've been working on this at least three years, probably closer to four years, trying to get this, so this is not just something that just came up above. It's been a long, long road so far.
And the other item is the employee compensation study. The personnel board did finally voted, finalized and voted the revised grade schedule for the updated job descriptions at their last meeting. Copies of that is, are in your boxes. There was an information session held today with the employees just to help them understand the process that was taken. And the personnel board is preparing for their presentation at town meeting to seek the necessary votes on the wage adjustment article under the personnel bylaw section and then also the wage adjustments under the budget fix article. The personnel board's prepared to meet with any employees who feel that the job description or the grade or step assignment should be reconsidered. So I believe that they anticipate that they'll be meeting with, you know, a number of different people over the next few weeks just to double-check the work that they had done.
Okay, yes, so, go ahead. Do you have a copy, an online copy?
An online copy?
Do you have a better copy? Because it's all cut out in the one where it...
Oh, okay, yeah, I'll get you that. Yep.
I don't know who's...
And the question I have is who's the, who determines, these are the actual facts, the personnel board, you, or the board of selectmen? Who's the final line on that?
The personnel board.
Personnel, by, by bylaw?
It is.
Okay. So I don't know if I got this earlier, but I think this is, we just had this in our box.
Yes.
This is the first time we've seen it, correct?
Yes.
The only, the only concern I have is that it looks like only, it, it puts a little dot that three people have gone down, but it looks like only two. There's a dot under selectman municipal assistant, but that's, it looks like the grade goes, the grade number goes up. So I don't know why that's listed as...
The dot indicates that the person's working out of grade, meaning that their, the wages that they're currently earning are in excess of what the grade would normally allow.
Well, that's not, but that's not the case when you look at new grade compared to current grade. The grade goes from five to nine under one. Wouldn't that be an increase?
No, because what they're being, currently being paid is above what they, what the grade would have allowed. So you would need to know what their current rate of pay is.
So the, the grade doesn't mean anything in that, in that case?
No, the, what that, what that dot, that asterisk means is that that person has been working out of grade.
And then, I mean, it looks like only, so once we, once we vote this at town meeting, then, then what? Then what happens next? We jump every, we make every, we make all the moves automatically?
So the, what happens is that the people who would change the grades, that grade change designation would be on file in their personnel file and with the accountant's office. The, any wage changes associated with that would become effective October 28.
So did you put a dollar amount to what this would cost us?
Their work, the personnel board is working on that with, working with accounting.
So, so like, like the first one, clerk, it says they're currently in grade three, their new grade is two. That's not any, that's not a decrease?
It's a change in grade, but it's not a decrease in pay. No one is going to be having a decrease in pay in this.
So my, my question is, so if someone was moved down from grade three to two, and then, when, when would they get the next increase? When they, now, the next step, when would they get the next step?
If it's a person who's currently maxed out on their grade and they're changed to a lower grade, they would wait two years before they'd be eligible for their next step increase. Because the personnel bylaws calls for a two-year... step increase, because the personnel bylaws calls for a two-year change. They normally, if they're already maxed out, they would not be receiving any step increase. So if they are changed and they now are at a lower step within that grade that would allow them to actually get some step increases, they'd wait the two years before they'd be eligible for that step increase.
And when they reach the.
And everyone else would be their normal anniversary date.
And when they reach step five, oh, that's it? Right, and then just get the cost of living.
So for people who are currently maxed out, if they go to a lower step within that new grade, they actually have more opportunity for great, for pay increases than they would have had otherwise.
So I just, I just wish we had more, this is before the town meeting, which is in two weeks, so we could have more information about it to discuss it. I mean, to me, when they got a meeting, what did you say? They were going to meet and discuss the rates? You said.
They're fin, they're finalizing the rates with accounting. They, they put together the schedule, accounting has to double-check it for them.
Why don't we, town meeting passed this article? So since we are, we are seeing only the rate, it's changes.
So I think, I don't know the answer to that, but I think John asked the question. So basically, we're going to get this, the personnel board's going to say, here it is, you have no say, this is what we say should happen.
It's their role to set the wage schedules and to make recommendations in terms of grade assignments.
So they're going to, they're going to lower people's pay?
No, they're not lowering people's pay. No one is receiving a pay reduction in this.
Well, if you look at this, so where it says employees would take a loss with a staff.
Those are people that are going to be working out of grade. If we force them to work at the grade, for example, Nancy, do you mind if I use you as an example? Go right ahead. Nancy currently has a contract. She is working, she's earning more than she would get if we were, if we stuck to the actual grade that she's assigned to. And there's several people that are in that situation. So that's what we call working out of grade. And they would continue to work at their current rate of pay and get any COLA that gets assigned to the wage schedule would also be applied to their wage rate. So they would increase each year by the COLA as, as the grade schedule would.
Well, okay, so I'm looking at, I'm not, not Nancy, because she's not really in the, in the chart here. So I'm looking at, I'm not even sure what the first, because it's cut, I guess it's assessors, administrative assistant. They're currently in 4-4, which is 2093, and they're going to 3-5, which is 2086. So that's a decrease, and they don't get any more steps.
So she's one of those individuals that would be working out of grade. She'll continue to get her rate of pay.
And she'll still get the step?
She would have, she would, she's maxed out. There would be no additional steps. So she'll get her rate of pay, and she would get any COLA applied to her annually moving forward.
And that's the same case with?
I think there's three individuals in three positions that are impacted that way.
The library.
Yeah, I.
There are some people, though, just so the, the public knows, although nobody is going to take a decrease, there are people that are being moved down to a lower grade and maxed out on their steps. So while they're not taking a pay cut, they're actually going to get a small increase there, just to use the first one on the list, it's a treasurer collector clerk, is going from grade three, step three. So that means there were two more chances for advancement above the COLA for that position. Now it's going to be moved to a grade two, step five. Small increase, the next step, but then there are no more step increases to that person. That person is maxed out in their position. So although it's not a pay cut presently, there are people that are going to, in the future, get less money than they otherwise would have without this compensation study.
And that's based on the grade assignments, which were done through the grading tool.
I just have an issue with not getting enough information, you know, by town meeting. I mean, this is, they're going to meet in two or three days, town meetings in two weeks?
Stitching.
Yep.
I'm trying to follow the, the different grades as we're going through, because I agree this is a lot, and it's very important to the people, our employees. So like the, the one that Chris was just using, grade two, step five, or somebody was talking about that, on the clerk. So the new position, the new grade is two, and they are, they qualify for five and they're currently at three?
So right now, they're, this is the current rates. They're at grade three, step three, 1785 an hour.
Yeah.
They're going to move to grade two, step five, 1825 an hour.
But then they're maxed.
Then they're maxed out. And some of these, if you look, step nine, step nine-five goes from 2963 up to 3011. Some of the grades and steps changed as well.
Right, so what happens after step five if they've maxed out?
That's it.
You max out at five. You don't have additional steps.
They'll just get their, not only 2% COLA.
Do they get, go, can they go to grade three or grade two is the, I'm talking about the number one?
You can only change a grade if your job description and your position responsibilities dictate the need or the change.
Oh, changes. So my guess.
And we get no, no review of any of the job descriptions, or have I missed that?
No, they don't go before the board of selectmen.
Shouldn't they? So we have an idea of.
Well, I'm wondering why, I'm wondering why, if we have no say in it, why anything comes in front of the board of selectmen? The only thing we get to do in this is fund it.
Town meeting to approve the change in the funding.
Right, we need to make sure there's money in the budget, and we don't have an amount if we make all these changes, what it's going to cost.
Based on what I saw as a draft for the wage adjustments needed, there's more than enough in that Article 10 wage adjustment that was voted at the Springtown meeting.
See, that first one, clerk, I don't even know what it's a clerk of, because it's cut out. Do you know?
Looks like treasurer.
I don't have the documentation. I think it's treasurer. And this is all based on our, our current bylaws. So it's been like this.
This, what, what's being proposed is a change that the wage schedule within the current bylaw and the grade schedule within the current bylaw would change.
And is this normal throughout towns that there is a personnel board that does this and then comes?
Yes.
So as Chris said, we're basically just saying, yeah, here's the money.
We've never, I mean, this is a larger change than normal.
Right.
But since I've been on the board, it's never come before us to, to opine on what the personnel board is doing. This happens to be a wholesale change in, in everything to make us more in line with the surrounding communities, but it, to me, that's, it's no, I mean, it took me a minute to figure out what all these numbers meant, but it's, it's no different than that when we vote on it, you know, every town meeting, the personnel board puts, puts up a new wage scale that we all vote on, and we don't opine on that when it's just a change of the scale. Now it happens to be the change of the positions as well.
Right, traditionally, the annual change reflects the addition of the COLA, that extra percentage that's added on each year.
And the ones with the asterisks means they have come to the top of their grade and they'll own, they'll get COLA and that, that's about it. Now, would that happen every year?
Yes, they'd get every, the annual COLA, whether it's 2%, 2.5%, whatever it ends up being.
That's not actually what the stars mean. The stars mean those three personnel are making more.
Right.
Than what the grade and step should. We're not going to penalize anybody and lower their salary, but they're now maxed out in their positions and will just get the COLA. So it's, it's as if they're a step five in their grade.
And what, that's the ones working out of grade presently.
And they have no, no way to go forward. They have nothing, no step to take, go forward.
As do, you know, anybody that's, that's been here for 10 years in the same position doesn't have any chances to go forward either.
So I'd go back, I'm just looking at the town. So I have this at town meeting. Is the personnel board going to present this? Because why would I present it? I, I know nothing about it.
The personnel board is.
Okay, because you gave it, it was given to me at the night we passed out who did what articles.
To, to move the question.
Yeah, so they should move the question.
But they, they will be doing the presentation.
You just say any questions can be answered by the personnel?
No, I think they, usually I have some idea, but I, really, we have no say in this. The personnel board should move this, just like the, the CPC moves theirs. We don't move it and then say any questions.
The CPC is different, because the CPC has.
But there's other, but there's other, you know, there's other things that we do over the years that I think.
I, I don't have, I don't care one way or the other on who moves the article, but when we have the yearly COLA personnel board, the change, it gets moved, the personnel board says we recommend approval. I think there'll be more questions on this. I, I don't have any issue with personnel board moving.
I think the personnel board should move it, and they, they should ask questions. So we, so basically, if they lower it and higher its salary, we, there's nothing we can do in regards to this. We just.
You'd recommend the town doesn't accept the article?
So don't you think it's, it's, you know, I don't think so, it's clear for me. Don't you think it's premature to put it on the town, town meeting and then do the people know this? It affects a lot of people, a lot of employees in the town.
Do personnel board have, have meetings, public meetings that people could come to that they were invited, employees or residents were invited to?
They, the employees had not been specifically invited, but we did have, they did hold an employee info session today on this.
Today?
And how was it received?
There were two employees that were concerned and planned to meet with the personnel board to review it, because as, as it mentioned in the, the document that you have there, there is a, an appeal process that's available to any employee.
And what happens in that appeal process? As, you know, if they say, well, you know, you're right, do they change the grade or something? How, look, change your grade?
The personnel board has the ability to change the grade mid-year if it's determined that it does need to be changed. They would go through the regrading process and, you know, make a determination, yes, what we had stands, or no, we should change this, and this would be the resulting grade.
And does, does the personnel board, well, besides this wage study, what else do they do?
If there's interpretation of the bylaw, they weigh in on the interpretation. They, I mean, there's a variety of different things that they deal with, but most of it is dealing with interpretation and administration of the bylaw where there's questions.
Okay, any other questions on this matter, I guess?
Mr. Rujal.
Yep.
Maybe for, on further agenda, I guess I would like to understand more of what that committee is, is doing. I don't know if maybe they could come before us, or, you know, just to help share the knowledge and what is going on.
So job descriptions and everything changed also, right?
Yeah, I mean, you, you've all been made aware of this. We've been discussing this for quite a while.
Right, no, I'm just asking.
Yes, all the, all the non-union job descriptions have been updated. That was necessary, that was a key part, that had to be done before anything else could be.
Yeah, I would, I would guess, looking at this chart, there would only be a few people that had questioned, because everybody else pretty much.
Either has no change or.
No change or goes up a little.
Correct.
So can I ask you one question to understand, for me to understand? Current grade is six. So that means they are making, current grade.
Is six and then the number next to it?
Six, and then step four is making 2334. So the new grade is nine and the step two.
So 2385. But they're getting, they're getting more steps before they max. So they used to max at 2436, now they're maxing at 3011.
Yeah.
So close to $6 increase.
So in that case, you know, I don't think so, even though grade is increased, then the dollar amount is more or less 50 cents.
For the, for next, for next year?
It's, it's two year, right? Every grade increase, step increases every two year?
Yes. However, the wage schedule gets adjusted annually by the COLA.
Okay. Right, so that six-four would go from 2334 to 2436. Now it will go from 2385 to 2596. So when I ask, you know, what it will cost us, not just for this year, what's it going to cost, what's this package going to cost over the next, just, I mean, that's, that's, in three years, that's $6 more an hour for just that one person.
There are one or two people that obviously have been underrated for quite a while, yeah. I think town clerk is one of those positions.
Looking at this, if you exclude the starred employees who are working out of grade, there are only two positions on the entire sheet that are going to be limited in the growth of their wage. They're going to get a raise now, but there's only two of them that have gone down a grade on the entirety of the sheet that, so that in the future, they're going to be limited and make less than they would have. Everybody, so I don't, I can tell you the employees as a whole aren't going to complain.
No.
To Chris's point.
I think, and I.
You know, this, it could, what, what is the cost of, if we could get, what is the cost of assuming no, no turnover in employees? If we can get a two and four-year budget forecast to see what the real cost is going to be?
Well, just from that one person, $6 more an hour, that's, that just happens to be the one that Raj was looking at. I, I just picked it off the sheet, so.
To me, we don't have enough information about this at a town meeting in two weeks. I, I can't.
So, and also, you know, for part-time administrative assistant, one is from the assessor's office and then a building inspector. How that one is three, grade three and the step four, grade three, step four, one is 4-4 and the 3-5, same part-time jobs and with the different grades?
No, but that's the thing, Raj, they're not, they're not the same type of job. You have to look at the.
Oh, job description?
The full job description and, you know, the, the rating criteria are very specific and very objective in terms of, I think it's 12 different rating categories. So really, there's two parts to a job description. There are the key responsibilities and duties, and then there's key descriptors.
So it's not like administrative assistant meets administrative?
It doesn't mean the same thing in each one, because one could have a higher level of responsibility in terms of very time-sensitive information and processing, and the other could have a higher grade because they are dealing with more confidential information. It really, it differs by position.
And John, to your point, you're saying we don't have enough information. We're used to knowing everything about every article, and a bunch of questions get asked at town meeting. This isn't our article, it's the planning board's article.
No.
Personnel board's article. They, I, they're the ones that have to have all the information to answer all the questions at town meeting. The board of selectmen is not going to be answering questions on this. We're going to be citizens voting on this article that's sponsored by the personnel board. If you look at it that way, as long as the personnel board has all of the answers for town meeting, I would say we are ready to, to move forward with this. Just because we don't know all the nitty-gritty details, it, it's not something that's, while everything's under our purview, this is, is not under our purview in the way most of the other articles are.
Well, I've always said when we, when we get this, finally get this, we can talk about then, about if we make the moves and if we fund them. But you're saying that once they pass this out, we need to find the money.
The money's already been allocated by the Springtown meeting.
For this year, for this year. I'm talking about, because I don't think this year is going to cost us much, but I just quickly, again, I just picked this up tonight, so, I mean, so, you know, I think in the future, it's going to cost, it's going to raise a lot in some of these cases. Now, administrative assistant, because they just talked about it, what's OH? It says.
The Board of Health? It's probably BOH.
So that, yeah. So the Board of Health Administrative Assistant goes up when the, the other one is Administrative Assistant Building?
Building Inspector, yeah.
Is that building inspector? I don't.
Yes, the building.
Yes.
That stays the same, and then Administrative Assistant Assessors seems to go down.
Go down, yeah.
So they're saying the Board of Health and the assessors are doing, those two people are doing different jobs, and they should be, get paid differently.
According to the grading.
May I ask, some of these don't have current grades, or they might have a new grade and not a new step? If I look at some of these, there's some empty blocks there. If I look at some of these, there's some empty blocks there.
Cloud drivers, peg coordinator.
Veterans agent.
Yes, some of those.
Facilities.
Veterans agent is a stipend, so it's.
Okay.
Same as Recreation Director.
Town accountant. It doesn't have a current step, but it's got a.
Accountant's contract.
So, this would not apply to them. So, they shouldn't really be listed, but they're showing a new step and a new grade on here.
I don't have it in front of me. I'm sorry.
Yeah, when the.
That's what I'm confused about, like, see at the bottom, everybody? If they don't, if it's not pertaining to them, then I would say either it shouldn't be on this list, or, and I'm not picking on the town accountant, but that's one here, that there's no current step, but there's a new grade and a new step and a current grade. So, I don't know if it was a typo, and there are some things, so, if you could find out. And then, the whole bottom from the DP, I think it's DPW Director, from there down, there is nothing on current grade, current step, or new step. It's just got a few new grades.
Those are listed as grades 11 and 12, and in the wage rate.
On the back.
The wage rate, it says all positions have contracts, so they just contracted positions. It's just a way to show.
So, okay, so this wouldn't impact, you know, those?
Ted, I, you know, I agree with you that this is the Personnel Board's thing, but I think there's not enough information available at this time to bring to town meeting.
So, may I ask, if we don't bring it to town meeting, does that mean the people who's out on their raises?
They have to wait until the next town meeting.
Have we, we've already voted, it's, it's going to town meeting. It's already been, it's on the board.
Right, I meant pass over.
Right, if it's passed over or if it's not approved, then, you know, reconsideration or consideration would have to happen in the spring.
Well, and when you, when you told us that funding's all set for all of this, but now, there's a lot of library positions. There's the, I know the cable access has some, only a, I don't know, they've only picked and chose a couple positions that they, they looked at. I don't think they looked at them all. So, those groups, there's increases of.
Yeah, for, for funding for the cable access, so the production assistant and, and access coordinators, those would come from different funding sources. Those would have to be funded within their own reserves for appropriation, what was appropriated at town meeting in their budget.
But it's the town, the peg board is under the town rate, no?
It is, but peg board specifically is funded through their reserves for appropriation, through the fees that are, are provided through charter.
Okay, so, so our only option that we could, all the articles, yeah, so the only way, we'd have to pass over it. So, I don't know if.
Can you send us some updated information on the questions that we've been asking tonight? I don't know if everybody's copy us, but I've got something that says append, appendix D, and there's nothing there. So, I don't know if there's other added information. It's blank.
There should, it's just a sheet and the wage schedule's behind it, which is appendix D.
Oh, okay. I thought maybe there was more information on here that's supposed to be.
So, I will send those questions along to the Personnel Board for you.
And if you, I don't know if it'll be the Personnel Board or Leslie that would give the budget projections for the future based on the steps?
Yeah, I'll have to speak to, to Accounting tomorrow to see if that's something that they can quickly just put into a formula.
So, they're going to have that ready for the town meeting?
I don't see any reason why that couldn't be ready for town meeting. That seems to me as something easily done.
Guys, we're not meeting again, except right before town meeting.
Excuse me?
We're not meeting again now until right before town meeting. This is, I mean, this is kind of like some of the things we talked about with the capital investment, getting this information when we can't talk about it, but.
To me, I, I think it's way too, too much information too late, my opinion.
Should I move along? Under new initiatives, the police department is looking to try to establish a trial program with town employees on a reaprogression defense program or RAD program. They're looking to try to reach out to female employees to participate in a trial program with hopes that if it's successful, it can be developed to offer to town residents in the future. So, that will be interesting to watch. We're trying to see who, which, which female employees would be interested in participating in that, so I'll keep you abreast as to whether that actually pulls off or not. Under business news, we do have a new business venture opening up on 73 Sterling Street. It is next level up academic and coaching center, and they're actually holding their ribbon cutting on October 25th. And then for other updates, we do have our certified free cash already. It's received tad early this year. We're confirmed to be getting $731,036 in our general fund free cash. And for the sewer enterprise, it's $896,687. So, we're pleased that, um, the general fund free cash is coming up roughly, roughly $20,000 more than we had last year. So, that's, that's good news. Under the FY19 legal expenses to date, we've paid $8,823. That doesn't include, that actually does include the most recent invoice that's being processed. And of that $8,823, $5,392 is directly related to the ZBA activity. The, as you know, ZBA is working with the Brossey case, and they're still working on mediation with the 40B project on North Main. And then just a reminder to the board that the MMA annual meeting is coming up on January 18th and 19th. Nancy has information on that in the, the beacons, which I believe those have all been put in their boxes, so that if you're interested in attending, you can take that information. And that's it for the town administrative report.
Okay. Next item is concurrence on the Department of Peter Bové as a special officer for detail work at a rate of $48 an hour for the period covering October 4, 2018 through June 30, 2019. Shamu. I have a motion in a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
So, under meetings and invitations, I forgot to look this one up, but, so the fire open house is 10:21. Do we have any times or anything on that? I can maybe find it, but do you have any more information or no?
It's in the town meeting mailer, but I'm, I'm thinking that it, I thought it ran from 10 to 2, but the information on that is in the town meeting mailer, which people will be getting shortly.
Okay. October 15th at 6:30, special meeting of the Board of, of the Board of Selectmen prior to the summer annual town meeting in the middle high school cafeteria. October 15th at 7:00 PM, we get the annual town meeting at the middle high school auditorium. If you could come out to that, we have, as we've been talking about, we have about, I don't know, 20 articles on that day. So, if you could come to the meeting, 7 o'clock, October 15th at, at, at the middle high school. And then we have additional extended early voting hours. This is for the state. Any more detail on that?
Right. So, people should, if they're interested in taking advantage of the additional dates that, um, the town clerk will be establishing for early voting, they can contact the town clerk's office or check on the website. They were looking to try to find some dates. Originally, we've been told that it would just be the normal operating hours of the town clerk's office, and they've announced that they will be doing some additional early voting hours.
And then, October 20th, free paper shredding event at the regional recycling center. Again, no, no times on that, and I'm guessing it's their regular hours on the 20th. That must be a, a Saturday, I'm thinking. I don't know.
I don't have details on that. I don't know.
Okay. And then the other item we have is the.
Cleanup.
Town cleanup. We have that coming up on the 13th of, that's not it.
October 13th from 9 to noon, with the rain date being October 20th.
Yeah. So, if, you know, if people want to, I don't know if you're getting many more signups?
We, we get a few more every week, so I'm really pleased with the turnout, the people who are volunteering on this.
Okay, so it's 9 to noon. You can sign up for all different types of things. There's a lot more information on the town's website, so if anybody's interested, they can go to the town website and sign up for different, different activities on that day. Okay, future agenda items and Board of Selectmen reports. Any reports or agenda items from anybody? No. The only thing is, in regards to the, I had the hardest time finding the goals, the town goals on the, the website. I don't know if they're on there.
The Board of Selectmen goals?
Yeah, I looked.
Actually, those will be on the agenda on the October 17th meeting to finalize and provide updates, and we can force them at that point.
So, they're not, there's nothing on there yet?
I don't believe they've been placed on the, on the website yet.
Okay. Okay, I guess that's it. No other comments? Okay, I want to take a motion to adjourn.
Shamu.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.